And Daniel, are you with? Daniel, are you with us as well?
I am, yes.
All right, thank you. I want to welcome everyone to the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting. My name is Jeff Carson. I'll be serving as Chairman of tonight's meeting. Just a quick announcement, just want to make a couple of introductions. We have the following Commissioners present with us this evening. Commissioner James Ernst, Commissioner Evelyn Hill, Commissioner Kevin, excuse me, Karen Jones, Commissioner Jake Miller, Commissioner Joanne Healy. We also have got our hand with the Government of Government Planning and zoning staff along with Daniel Kuhn, our Kuhn, our legal counsel, and we have Janet Parker, who is the Executive Assistant to the Department of Land Use and Urban Planning, who will read the opening statement.
We would like to welcome those participating by telephone or Zoom to the meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Members of the Board of Zoning Appeals are participating remotely by Zoom, and Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as Chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background and plan to stay visible during the meeting. Board members, use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak. And after Chairman Carson recognizes you, please unmute your microphone and state your name when you begin to speak. If you need to recuse, or if you need a personal break, use the raise your hand feature. For those attending the meeting this evening, please use the raise your hand feature if you want to speak on an application. After the chairman recognizes you, please state your name and address and make your comments. If you are having issues getting the Zoom meeting, please email planninginfo@yco-kck.org and let Secretary Parker know. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. The applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their case, which includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the board will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be recognized and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be recognized to make their statements and ask questions, with each member of the public being given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker's time may be extended in five-minute intervals by a two-thirds majority vote of the board. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the board if a question is directed to them. The staff will make their recommendation, and the board will discuss the application and make their decision with a brief statement of the reason for the motion preceding the making of the motion. Motion to approve shall include the staff stipulations unless otherwise stated in the motion. Mr. Chairman, our first application is BOZA 2021-009. Larry Easton, for a property at 2948 South 65th Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Easton, are you in the audience tonight? I thought I saw you earlier. With your hand up. There we go. Okay, I've got you unmuted. Please give us your name and address, please, and tell us about your project. Mr. or Mrs. Easton, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yeah. Stay.
There you go. We can hear you now. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please. Tell us about your project.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear us now?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
My name is Larry Easton. I live at 2948 South 65th Street, Kansas City, Kansas. Lived here approximately 22 years. I've lived in the Turner District my entire life. We have approximately, we have five acres that we thought we bought, it's what the title said. Anyway, we have not utilized about four acres of the property, and we'd like to start utilizing it. We are going to clear some land, have some goats, and have going to clear ourselves some trees, possibly do some Christmas trees, just for just to utilize our property that we've never really used. And that's just what we'd like to do.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the Commission? Saying none, we'll go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this case? I see Mr. Walker. I believe you've got your hand up. Are you wanting to speak on this case?
No, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I've been having trouble getting in. We're just not actually getting in here. No, I didn't. I didn't. We were just trying to get in. I don't have anything there, but.
Thank you. Anyone want to speak to this case, please? Okay, saying none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to staff and get their comment.
Mr. Chair, this is going to hand over to a planner of design. Let me start by saying Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day to everyone on the call. This case before you is in, is is being heard in conjunction with changes on 2021-009 later this evening for the City Planning Commission. Before you at the from a changes on for R1 to AG again for agricultural purposes, as the applicant just stated, that it requires a variance, two variances, in fact, one for the size of the parcel and one for the frontage of the parcel. Exones require a minimum of 250 feet street frontage, as well as a five-acre minimum size. It's just under five acres, and the lot size is about 80, 81 feet shy of the 250 mark. It is, as you can see, in the Turner area, it's a size and shape of lot that's very similar to other parcels on the on this, on the streets. So it is generally in line with the neighborhood character. You can see a couple of pictures here. Staff has received no letters of support, opposition, or NOBs on the property recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? Saying none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments and stipulations.
Your motion is approved by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Healy. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Saying none, roll call, please.
Still.
Hi.
Healy.
Hi.
Jones.
I.
Miller.
I.
Ernst.
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. We will see you at the Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting here in just a little bit. Thank you.
Our next application is BOZA 2021-020. William England, for a property at 2332 South 14th Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. England, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Thank you. My name is Will England. I work for CI1 LLC at the address of 2332 South 14th Street.
Go ahead and tell us about your project, please.
This, this address is currently, I believe, low-density residential, which we're trying to rezone to be commercial. We previously had operated this address, our company did, under illegal non-conforming use. However, we are trying to move to a new office permanently and rent out this address here at 2332 to another business, specifically an insurance business. However, we need to rechange the zone so that they would be operating in a commercial property.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Saying none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak on this case? Please raise your hand. Saying none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to, I'm sorry, Leanna, are you wanting to speak on this case? Leanna, I've got you ready to speak. I just need you to unmute yourself, please. Give us your name and address. Leanna?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm, I live at 2400 South 14th Street, so I'm just the property south of.
And what is your name, please?
Leanna Dishman.
Okay, thank you.
And I agree that this should go through. I realize that, you know, it's it's an unusual building close to the road, but I think that the zoning it commercial for this company is a good thing for the neighborhood. And I spoke with neighbors around, and I haven't found any opposition to it.
Okay. Anything else you'd like us to know?
Um, no.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Erin Striker, I've got you queued up.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, there are a whole lot of conditions for approval from staff on this one. And I just wondered if the applicant could speak a little bit about if he's able to meet all these conditions, the trees, the sidewalk, all of the site design stuff that's listed here.
Okay. Anything else you'd like us to find out, Erin?
That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could you please have her give her name and her address?
Yes, please, Erin. I'm sorry. I hear from you so, so much. I know you, but we need it for the record.
Yep, Erin Striker with Rosel Development Association, 1403 Southwest Boulevard.
Great, thank you. Okay, anyone else want to speak before I go back to the applicant? Okay, saying none, we'll close the public portion of meeting for this case. We'll go back to the applicant. Mr. England, can you address some of the conditions outlined in the staff report? Do you have any issues with the items that are noted for conditions for your approval?
No, we do not have any issues. I believe we are asking for several variances, though, which were the only issues that we actually had with any of the comments.
But with regard to, like, landscaping and sidewalks and things like that, you're okay with all the staff recommendations?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we're going to now go to the staff and get their comment. Director Hand?
English Chair, this is going to hand over to a planner of design. Again, before you, there's three separate variances. As the applicant mentioned, this is a non-conforming building that lost its non-conforming use. So we seek to solve that issue permanently through both these variances and the change of zone and master plan amendment that are tied to this case that will be heard later tonight, the City Planning Commission, that's changes on 2021-017 and Master Plan Amendment 2021-012. Those cases included multiple conditions of approval related to site design, which I'll go over in greater detail at the City Planning Commission hearing. But basically, what you have tonight is an old building that no longer meets the modern commercial zoning code. And we think it fits the character of the neighborhood. It's been there for a long time. It's operated with no issues. Specifically, it's a front, a side, and a parking requirement. Currently, the parking is provided in the public right of way, so technically it has zero parking and needs a, needs a variance for all of that. Staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Saying none, roll call, please. I'm sorry. I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Ernst?
I move the Board of Zoning Appeals, approved case BOZA 2021-020.
All right, thank you. Motion for approval made by Commissioner Ernst. Commissioner Jones, is that a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Saying none, roll call.
Hill?
Hi.
Healy?
Hi.
Jones?
I.
Miller?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our last application on the Board of Zoning Appeals agenda is BOZA 2021-024. Bridget Jackson, for a property at 2919 Lathrop. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson, I've got you ready to speak. Go ahead, please, give us your name and address for the record, please, and tell us what you'd like to do here.
Okay, my name is Bridget Jackson. My address is 2919 Lathrop Avenue. And the situation is that, that I'm proposing to do a remodel to the house that also involves an addition. This addition will extend no further than the current footprint of the house. However, the house itself, and so therefore the addition, is already within the setback boundary. The house was built in 1946, so I don't know when the, the zoning laws came into B, but I guess ever since they have been, the house has been in violation or, or within that setback, so my proposal is to do this addition. It's about, about 300 square feet, and it will be no, no more into the setback than, than it currently is. My, my family has lived in this house since 1967. We moved here. And I've been away from it for a good while, but I came here about six years ago to stay with my elderly mother. The houses fell into disrepair, but because I think there's a brighter future for Wanda County, and even in the inner city where we are, I think it makes sense to stay there and improve the, the area. There are a few Habitat for Humanity houses built in the area, so I'm, I'm thinking it would be a good thing even to put the money into the remodeling in addition, so it just seems like it's going to be a good situation for me to stay here financially and yet to make the house more livable for myself and my mother now, and then myself later, after my mother's gone, assuming I outlive her. So that's my proposal, and I'll leave it in your hands now.
Okay, thank you. So the footprint of the house isn't changing at all, correct? Or is the proposed addition, is that over, is that in place of something else, or is that in a new, is that a new? I know it's called an addition, but is that something that you're adding onto the side of the house that was previously there, or?
No, it'll be an addition that'll be added on adjacent to the house, so it's when, within my same within the yard, but it'll be a new addition. There's this yard there now, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any questions from members of the Commission? I'm seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that came tonight to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand, okay. I've got Phil D. ready to speak. Go ahead and please give us your name and address.
Good afternoon, or good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Phil Doherty. I live in Olahtha, Kansas, and I am a friend of the applicant. I'm also her architect, and I just wanted to say I'm in favor of the project. I think the house was well-established before the setback rules were filed in place. And in my opinion, just as Bridget stated, I think the addition to the existing house will be an asset to the neighborhood. And that's my statement.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Okay, saying none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to staff and get their comment.
English Chair, this is going to hand over to a planner of design. Again, what we have here is a case where we have a legal non-conforming building. This is in the Northeast area master plan, right at the corner of Lathrop, and I believe it's North 30th Street. As the applicant mentioned, they're providing an extension on the house where she's seeking two variances. One is a front yard setback variance for the addition. We went ahead and threw in the corneyard setback variance to make the house to correct the legal non-conformance of the house as well. You can see a picture here against this, the applicant mentioned it was built in the 1940s. The addition is very much in line with the character of the neighborhood, as well as the character of the house itself. Until this evening, staff had received no letters of support nor opposition. There are no NOBs on the property. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Saying none, we'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments and stipulations.
Thank you. Motion to approve made by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second, Commissioner Hill? I need you to unmute yourself, Commissioner Hill.
I second.
Thank you. Motion approved by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Commissioner Hill. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Saying none, roll call.
Hill?
Hi.
Healy?
I.
Jones?
I.
Miller?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. That concludes tonight's Board of Zoning Appeals agenda. We will reconvene in about 10 minutes to start the City Planning Commission. Thank you all. We will reconvene in about 10 minutes to start the City Planning Commission. Thank you all. Mr. Easton, I see that your hand is up. Can I answer a question for you? Janet, I'm ready whenever you are.
Hey, I just need to make sure, because I'm not seeing Mrs. Jones or Ms. Ewing.
Okay. And Mr. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I've got to make sure that everybody is back.
Okay. Okay, looks like we've got everybody. Want to welcome everyone to the Planning Commission meeting tonight. My name is Jeff Carson. I'll be serving as chair of tonight's meeting. Want to make a few quick introductions. With us tonight, we have Commissioner Karen Jones, Commissioner James Ernst, Commissioner Evelyn Hill, Commissioner Jake Miller, and Commissioner Joanne Healy. We also have with us tonight Janet Parker, who is the Executive Assistant to the Department of Land Use and Urban Planning, Geter Hand, who is the Director of Land Use Urban Planning, Byron Toy, Urban Planning Staff, and Daniel Kuhn, Unified Government Legal Counsel. So I will turn the meeting over to Secretary Parker, who will read the opening statement.
We would like to welcome those participating to the meeting of the City Planning Commission. Due to COVID-19, the members are participating remotely by Zoom webinar. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background and plan to stay visible during the meeting. Planning Commission members, please use the raise your hand feature to speak. After Chairman Carson recognizes you, unmute your microphone and please state your name when you begin to speak. If you need to recuse, or if you need a personal break, use the raise your hand feature. For those in attendance, use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an issue. The chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Unmute your microphone and state your name and address before giving your comments. If you have called in by telephone only, or if you are having trouble logging into the Zoom meeting, please email planninginfo@yco-kck.org as Secretary Parker is monitoring that email. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The Planning Commission is a voluntary body of citizens, which will review each zoning proposal. For all change of zones, special use permits, vacations, and preliminary plan reviews on tonight's agenda, the Planning Commission makes recommendations to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners, who will then make the final decisions on Thursday, October 28, 2021. For final plans and final plan reviews heard tonight, the Planning Commission's decision is final, and there will not be another hearing. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining their proposal. Please note that the applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their case. The 15 minutes includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Planning Commission will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be called upon and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be called upon and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Please note that each member of the public who wishes to speak will be given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker may request to extend their time, and the Planning Commission, made by two-thirds majority vote, extend any speaker's time in five-minute increments. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will then be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the commission if a question is directed to them. The Planning Commission will discuss the application and make their recommendation. If persons in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, a means is available by legal protest petition, which can be obtained along with the necessary instructions by emailing the Urban Planning and Land Use Department at planninginfo@yco-kck.org tomorrow morning. Any application receiving a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission will appear on the consent agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the Unified Government Commission, or other interested parties, the Planning Commission's recommendation will be adopted. The consent agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at 7:00 PM. The Planning Commission will also have a consent agenda as part of their meeting this evening. The consent agenda is the first part of the agenda, and items on the consent agenda are final plans, final plans, or special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the staff, a member of the Planning Commission, or other interested parties, the staff recommendation on all of the items on the consent agenda will be adopted by the Planning Commission at one time. I will read a list of agenda items on the consent agenda. And when I have completed the list, the chairman will ask if there are any requests to remove items. This is your time to use the raise your hand feature, be recognized, and request that an item be removed from the consent agenda if you do not agree with the staff recommendation. The Planning Commission is required to disclose contacts about any item on the Planning Commission agenda. Before each item, I will ask if any contacts have been made, and members of the commission will be asked to disclose those contacts. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing body for their consideration in making a final decision. In addition, those who receive notices for this hearing will again receive them for the hearing on Thursday, October 28, 2021. I will now read the items on the consent agenda. Consideration of the September 13, 2021 City Planning Commission Minutes. Flat 2021-019, Mike and Wanda Falk. Final plan for the estates of Goodman Meadow at 2419 and 2431 North 123rd Street. Flat 2021-021, Curtis Peterson with Paulson LA PC. Final flat for one commercial lot for Homefield Camping World at 1201 North 98th Street. It also has a corresponding plan review application, PR 2021-031. Curtis Peterson with Paulson LA PC. Final plan review for Camping World at 1201 North 98th Street. And plan review application, PR 2021-025. John M. White with Heartland Ventures. Final plan review for the three buildings at the Enclaves of Mission Cliffs at 3857 South Thompson. The items I have just read are on the consent agenda. At this time, does any member of the commission wish to disclose any contact on any of these items? Thank you. Please include the following items as part of the record for all of the items on the consent agenda. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated October 11, 2021. The application of documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file and the notices to property owners. The commission will vote to approve in one vote these items unless someone requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the commission that would like an item removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll go to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to have something removed from the consent agenda for special consideration? Please raise your hand. And I see Nancy, that you have your hand up. Could you please go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell me which item you'd like to have removed?
Yeah, hi, this is Nancy's husband, Howard.
Howard, what's your name, please?
Howard Tai, T-A-I.
Okay.
And I, I'd like you guys to remove the third one, the Mission Cliffs Townhome Development. Just have some questions for the developer.
Okay, so we will remove PR 2021-025 from the consent agenda. Anything else, sir?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Anything removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. I will stand for a motion on the remaining consent agenda items. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve ten agenda as written minus the, minus PR 2021-25.
Thank you. Is there a second Commissioner Hill?
A second.
The motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda made by Commissioner Jones and seconded by Commissioner Hill. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hill?
Aye.
Ewing?
Aye.
Jones?
Mr. Jones, I need you to unmute. There you go.
Aye.
Thank you.
Miller?
Aye.
Ernst?
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. If your item was listed on the consent agenda, there's no reason for you to stay on the meeting unless you want to hear the other items this evening. But if your item was on the consent agenda, you are done for this evening.
Mr. Chairman, that now takes us back to the one item that was removed from the consent agenda. Plan review application, PR 2021-025. John M. White with Heartland Ventures. Final plan review for the three buildings at the Enclaves at Mission Cliffs at 3857 South Thompson.
Thank you. Mr. White, are you in the audience? I need to raise, I need you to raise your hand, please, so I can locate you. Thank you. Okay, I've got you unmuted to speak, so if you would, please, give us your name and address for the record and tell us about your project.
My name is John White with Heartland Ventures. 20848 West 45th Terrace in Shawnee. Our project is, we are continuing to develop and build the last three buildings that will be, look just the same as the existing ones that are there. We are not changing any, any design elements. We're going to follow through so that it's completely cohesive with the rest of the subdivisions there.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant from members of the commission? Okay, seeing none, we'll open up the public portion of the meeting. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? And I see Jamie Ball with your hand up. Please go ahead and unmute yourself. Give us your name and address, please, for the record.
I'm Jamie Ball, 3875 South Thompson Street.
Okay, and do you have some questions or?
Well, we were wondering, this is Debbie Ball. And we were wondering.
I'm sorry, who's speaking? Debbie or Jamie Ball?
Both of us. We're together.
Okay, and you reside at the same address?
Um, she visits. She, she's my mom.
Okay.
But we were wondering where the property line is.
The property line for what, him?
For the.
The entire development?
No, for one of the buildings.
Then you're going to need to be more specific.
Okay, building D. Building D.
You want to know where the property line is?
Yes, because Jamie's building will face that building, so when she walks out her front door.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't know who's speaking. So if you're going to take turns, you're going to need to identify who's speaking so that the record will reflect who's speaking.
Sorry.
Okay, Jamie, Jamie Ball. So I believe I'm in building, the existing building C. I'm in the middle unit in existing building C.
Okay.
Um, and when I come out my front door, I'll be facing that new building, building D.
Okay.
And I was just wondering where building C's property line ends. Because it just seems like that porch coming off of building D is over where we've been landscaped and where, where we've been taking care of that, the grass and trees.
Okay, so you're wanting to know approximately how, how much distance is between your, your building and that one? So is that maybe what you're going to need?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, and the porch specifically, that comes off of building D.
Okay, all right. We, we will see if we can get you some answers to that. Do you have other questions?
Um, how, how far do buildings have to be, the three-story buildings?
From the property line.
From the property line?
So what is the requirement?
Right.
And then, and then do you want to know if these buildings meet that requirement?
Right, yes.
Okay, all right, we'll see if we can get you some answers. Is there anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. I also have Zach Flanders.
Thanks. This is Zach Flanders at 3812 South Thompson Circle. And I just wanted to voice my support for the project. I think it will be a nice addition to the neighborhood. I think it's great that it has the same design as the other townhouses, which are very nice. And welcome having some new neighbors in the neighborhood if you all decide to agree to this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, now showing Nancy. Please go ahead and give us your name and address.
Hey, this is Howard Tai again, 3873 South Thompson. Our con- concern and question is the same as the Ball, Jamie Ball and, and her mom. I.e., we are in building C on the corner, and then building D, whether the property lines that's drawn is within the, the KCK ordinance. Because based on the schematics that we receive, it looks like it's really, really cuts down any space that may be between the two buildings.
Okay, so your, your concern is the distance from the front of one building to the front of the building across from, correct?
Correct. Too close for comfort. We're like, diagonal, well, it's kind of like into, almost intersecting.
Okay, we will, we'll get you some answers. Anything else you'd like to find out?
No, that, that will be all.
All right, thank you.
Oh, um, and, and because of that, we were related. Question is, how would they work on the parking situation? Because it's already a very confined area, as you could see from the map. And what do the developer plan to do as far as parking situation? Because the, the access to and from this new development, as far as their garages and so forth, there's really only the, the Thompson Street, if you could, you could see from the map. And there's going to be cars coming in and out of, of these, these new. And there's gonna be cars coming in and out of of these these new townhomes and where will actually get go through. Where will the traffic for for their cars go through?
Okay, we'll we'll try to get you to answer that question. Okay, thank you. And I have Aaron Striker.
This is Aaron Striker with Roseville Development Association, fourteen oh three Southwest Boulevard. RDA supports this project. It's exactly what was planned way back in two thousand six with a lot of really good thought that went into it. And it fits the Roseville Master Plan, so I'm glad we're gonna hear the applicant clarify where exactly. The new building will be in relationship to building C. But I I think overall, this is gonna be a really great project for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else that wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. We're gonna go back to Mr. Wyatt and get it get some answers to a couple of the. Questions asked by the members of the public. So first of all, can you address the location of building D? With regards to building C, what's the distance and maybe the distance from porch to porch kind of thing? Yes, go ahead, Mr. White.
I don't currently have the plan up in front of me. Could you have the have? Possibly Gunnar pull up that?
Okay. Gunnar, can you accommodate him, please, on that? Might have to blow that up, at least for my benefit as far as being able to see any distance. Does that help you, Mr. White?
It looks like that side setback right there from building to building, you're at what's that thirty thirty foot, thirty point oh eighteen there? And as it goes down on building C, it turns into about thirty two point oh eight. Uh, looks like the building line, if we can scroll up just a tad bit. Let me see here, there's try to find the building line for the existing. So it's like there's gonna be that. There's that that retaining wall being built to connect in between the two buildings for the. Obvious elevation change right there, but I'm not seeing down there.
Gunnar, can you point out which one is building? Building C?
Building C, yeah, that's building C right there.
Okay, all right, and then building D is, there we go.
Correct.
Okay, so it's so it one building spacing one way and one building spacing the other, correct?
Correct, yes, and and the decks on these here looks the decks on the first two is is the rear of the building with with a car, it looks like, and then the. I'm not exactly sure on the on that one there, but I know our building is is placed in here in accordance with the with the setbacks. That are required for the for this type of type of building.
Okay, but it looks like it's between thirty and thirty two feet as you go down.
As you go down, yeah, that that's from from building to building, correct?
Do you know the the depth of those porches on the front?
The depth of their porch, I cannot confirm. The depth of the porches on ours looked like to be about. And it's not quite ten feet, I don't think.
Okay. All right, the bottom line is it's gonna be between thirty and thirty two feet.
For for from building to building, correct?
Okay.
And you can see that the the dash line there, that is where the the property line is.
Okay, so the property lines be on the sidewalk.
Correct.
Okay, can you address? Parking and road use in and out of the development where they'll be coming in off of Thompson Avenue, is that correct?
Yes, we're coming off Thompson Avenue, the the twenty four foot wide entry coming into it, and then they will have the same amount of parking. It with the individual driveways going to each building to each each unit, the same as all the existing. As all the existing tenants that live there as well.
Okay, so the garages are on the back or I I guess to be on the.
Yeah, all the garages, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, all the garages fa- face that the the center road in there.
Okay. And is there parking besides the the garage parking? Is there room for at least one to two cars?
Yeah, there is. Each one has one one car garage for each one and also a space for a single car in the in the driveway.
Okay, so two parking spaces maximum?
Yes, per per unit.
Okay. I think I addressed everything else. The rest of it might be for staff. Okay, anything else you'd like to add, Mr. White, before we go to staff and get their comment?
And I I believe that on that thirty two thirty thirty feet is a shared easement for the overall project of the for the overall development. Not just the addition, since this was was originally planned as an entire. The entire thing was planned together.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions, any remaining questions for the applicant before I go to to go to staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to Director Han and get his comment.
All right, can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
All right, again, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design. I want to scroll up back to the top here and get started from the top. Again, we're looking at a final development plan for the three townhomes. Again, this is a. It was the previous townhome expired in twenty twelve, so they had to go back through the approval process. This is in compliance with the. Originally approved preliminary development master plan. Very little has changed. Other than conditions of approval, which I'll go over here in just a second from staff. This is in the Roseville area master plan. A couple of the conditions that we noted, you can see buildings D, E and F are the ones under construction, buildings A, B and C are the ones that exist today. Go to a different site plan. I think this one will work best. There was a couple of things that staff asked for in terms of conditions of approval relating to this. First and foremost, you can kind of see here that in the common space area, there's a there's a trail that ends at many many avenue. Many avenues, that side of many avenue does not have a sidewalk, so that trail basically empties out into the street. Staff had requested that that trail be rerouted to connect to. You can kind of see it better here. And a common track that goes around the Mission Cliffs development. There is a trail, although it has. Had some issues in the past, but thinking long term. Staff felt that it would be better connected in long term in the future to connect that trail off to the property to the north and eventually connect to. The existing trail that that previously went around the entire Mission Cliffs development. Similarly, you can see sort of the. Sidewalks that connect to Thompson Avenue, the front, essentially the entrances, if you will, of buildings D and F. Front the driveway. We asked that the developer sort of separate the pedestrian entrances into the front doors from the current driveway entrances into the garage. Additionally, we asked that a sidewalk be connected off of the south side of building D and wrap around the fronts, if you will. Facing many streets, buildings. Get this right, D and F. So additional pedestrian circulation essentially were some conditions of approval. Additionally, there's quite a significant grade drop from the buildings D and F and Mini Street. Some of it is protected by assisting tree stands. We asked that that tree stand, both from an erosion control as well as a screening to the single family homes across many street be maintained. Until this evening, staff had received no letters of support, opposition. There are no N O Vs on this property. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve subject staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion approved made by Commissioner Jones. Sir, second Commissioner Huey.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Huey. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Saying none, roll call, please.
Hill?
I.
Ewing?
I.
Jones?
I.
Miller?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this planned review, subject to the conditions of staff passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, and Janet, this will be heard again on October twenty eighth.
No, Mr. Chairman.
This was consent. This was consent. Thank you.
Right. The consent agenda is now complete, and we will now move on to the non-consent agenda.
Thank you.
The first item on the non-consent agenda is change of zone application. CoZ twenty twenty one dash zero zero nine. Larry J. Easton. Change of zone from R one single family district to A G agriculture district. For horses, cattle and hay production at twenty nine forty eight South Sixty Fifth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated October eleventh, twenty twenty one. The application of other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
No.
Thank you.
And Miss Miss Easton, I have you queued up, ready to speak, so if you go ahead again, please give us your name and address and tell us what you want to do here.
Uh, my name is Larry Easton. I live at twenty nine forty eight South Sixty Fifth Street. I've lived here approximately twenty two years. I've lived in the Turner area my entire life. We are no longer gonna have a horse here. My granddaughter has a horse and they ended up moving out of the Turner area. We are not gonna have a cow. We are gonna raise some goats. We had the lady from the, what was that?
The staff meeting.
Well, she came out and visited the property and she said that it would be ideal to do goats and we suggested we would like to do some goats and she suggested doing goats. And we'd like to, we're gonna utilize our property that we've never used. It's an all in the back of our property, none in the front. Or to the sides of our property, it's all in the rear. And. We hope to clear some land, sell some trees off of it. That was their recommendation and get ready for some goats. And we just wanted to stay in compliance with the city so we could have some equipment to maintain the property for the goats and. Possibly grow some Christmas trees if it works out. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can you tell me how many goats you're planning on having?
Well, we originally thought we might have ten. She recommended three to start out, and so we're gonna see how that works out, and she also recommended possibly do some. Some sheep and also my wife wants to do some chickens. I forgot about that.
And are you, do you have a number of what you're thinking about for chickens?
Oh, I'm sorry. She recommended start out around ten chickens and three goats. And we're gonna see how it works out as to whether we breed and do anymore. We wanna possibly sell the milk. Off of the goats and possibly just sell the goats. For profit and, you know, for meat and to buy more goats and do it again. We just want to utilize our property.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, saying now we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Saying now we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Han and get his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, earlier this evening, the Board of Zone Appeals approved. Twenty Boza twenty twenty one dash zero zero nine, two variants related to this change of zone from R one to A G. As the applicant mentioned, this is in the Turner area. Along South Sixty Fifth Street. You can see some pictures of the property here. The applicants did meet with the Conservation District and they did develop a conservation plan that is included as a condition of approval. To this application. Staff received no letters of support or opposition. There are no N O Vs on this property. This is a violation. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second? Commissioner Miller? Has been moved to approve by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Any discussion on that motion for approval? Saying none, roll call.
Hill?
I.
Ewing?
I.
Jones?
I.
Miller?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this change of zone application. Subject to the conditions in the staff report passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on October twenty eighth at seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners.
Do we need to be?
That, yes, you will need to be there for that meeting, only briefly.
Okay.
All right, thank you, but you're done for tonight.
It's a webinar again, also.
I believe that will be via Zoom as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
You bet.
Mr. Chairman, we have two applications that we're gonna hear together. Master Plan Amendment, M P L twenty twenty one dash zero one zero. Andrew C. Miller with Summit Real Estate Group. Master Plan Amendment from mixed use to industrial at six twenty six North Forty Seventh Street. And the corresponding change of zone application. CoZ twenty twenty one dash zero one three. Change of zone from M one light industrial and industrial park district to M two general industrial district. For storage in conjunction with existing twin traffic, a traffic marking and striping company at six twenty six North Forty Seventh Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated October eleventh, twenty twenty one. The application of other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. C. Miller or your representative, are you in the audience? Please raise your hand so I can. Andrew C. Miller. Is there anyone in the audience representing this application tonight? I've got Powell Menace. Are you here representing the the applicant?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Powell Menace. I'm senior architect with Davidson Architecture and Engineering. Our address is forty three oh one Indian Creek Parkway, Overland Park. Kansas. We're representing Mr. C. Miller and on behalf, he's also a an owner's representative of twin traffic. And as was previously stated, they're an existing company. They've been in this location for. Almost twenty years. At the same address, they. Their business is doing. Pavement markings on on pavement for highways and and various roads. The purpose of our proposal to go from M one. To M two is to allow their existing facilities, they're currently four buildings on site. They are, they range in use, but most of them are for equipment and maintenance. Storage and provisions for their company. The purpose of the proposal to go to M two is to allow. A portion of their lot two here to be. Make it more compliant with. Zoning regulations. M one. It was very. Did not allow them to store what they need to store. They have trucks, they have equipment. All critical to the use of their business, and so the proposal to go to M two will allow them to be more compliant, to be compliant. With zoning regulations. A a few other. Things to mention here about the project, the proposed project. I first, I should say first that the reason why we're not rezoning. Uh, the, I first, I should say first that um, the reason why we're not rezoning the entire lot two property. Uh, is it made sense to maintain an M one zone? As it uh is um adjacent just to the north of the uh M one zone that is to remain. Our residences, our existing residences. So we felt it was. Appropriate to maintain uh a lesser zone of the existing M one zone. Uh, there uh in the northeast quadrant of their lot two property. So um, there are existing fences that occur that uh continues to screen the, the use. Along uh that separates the resident residential area from the M one. Um, and we, we propose to have those maintained. Um, and um, what we will do if uh the M two zone is approved. Is to uh work on the rest of the site to make it more um zoning compliant. Uh, there are a couple of items. Uh, proposed uh a twelve hundred square foot addition to an existing maintenance building that they do have on site. That is part of our, our preliminary development plan. And also there is an existing curb cut along Forty Seventh Street. That I believe two in traffic will want to try to use for a second, second deck, and secondary access. Uh, to the south part of their site. Um, we, we've spoken with uh. Planning and staff, um, staff and planning in the planning department and, and I believe they are all supportive of our proposal for uh these proposals. So um, that's basically the uh project. Um, and uh, I'm. Uh, happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? I am not seeing any, so we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to staff and get their comment. Director Hand?
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Uh, again, this case is being heard uh in conjunction both the change of zone and master plan amendment. Um, there is a pending lot split as the applicant mentioned, which will come into effect here in just a second. This is in the midtown area. Excuse me, of uh unified government. Uh, again, across the street, if you're familiar from the future Scubuzo's plant and redevelopment, uh, the old Indian Springs Mall. Um, as you can see on this proper, on this zoning map, the property actually has three different zoning types on it. Uh, currently, and this change of zone will correct that issue. Um, let me get to, before I do that, it is also a site of an undermined area. Um, we included that just uh for notification purposes if the applicant uh or future. Um, developers of the property were, didn't understand that. So that is something they need to consider moving forward. Uh, let me get to, there you go. You can see here uh essentially in this uh, in this plat. Um, they're gonna maintain um M one zoning in this parcel as the applicant mentioned, adjacent to the single family neighborhood to the north. And then change everything else um to M two to allow primarily outdoor storage. That's one of the primary differences between M one and M two. Both parcels are being proposed to change from mixed use uh to industrial. Um, moving forward, uh, there's a couple of conditions of approval staff would like to mention. Um, uh, to, uh, in regards to this uh area, uh, you can see it. Um, and you only go back to the aerial real quick. You can see it in the area. This is, there's an existing tree stand that does a pretty good job buffering. Um, the, the, the property from the residential uses to the north, um, condition of approvals to maintain that tree stand. And then again, there is an existing um. Screen uh fence. Uh, the condition of approval is actually for an architectural screen fence defined as um Masonry columns every thirty two feet. So that does represent an upgrade of the existing fence. It also requires an extension uh the um across the entire northern and eastern property lines uh to the north. Um, and to the east, it is also zoned R one to the south. It is zoned M two and M three. Um. Uh, there is some encroachment which you can see now that our arrows are not perfect. Um, so we'll have to review this in greater detail, but it looks like some of the use is spilling off over into the property to the south. There was a typo in condition number three for the change of zone and condition number one. It's the same condition, different numbering for the master plan amendment. Staff would like to correct. Uh, I'm gonna read it right now. Condition number three and one uh respectively states, aerial imagery shows the paved area extending to the south of the subject property into parcel nine one six three oh two. The applicant must cease use of this neighboring property. It then continues to say, and construct an architectural screening fence at or before the subject property's southern boundary line in order to prevent future encroachment or trespass. Staff meant to and did not um in our staff report, remove everything after and. Again, you do not need to provide architectural screening uh between and uh industrial use and another industrial use, which is what's happened on the southern body. Again, you do have to do that from an industrial use to a residential property, again, to the north and to the east, excuse me, north and to the west. Pardon me. Um, so with those two corrections, one in the change of zone conditions of approval, the other, again, the same uh change, but uh. Represented as condition number one in the master plan amendment. Uh, Steph has received uh no letters of support, opposition. There's some old NOVs on the property, but nothing um, uh, no issues currently. Uh, staff recommended, excuse me, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions for the director? Commissioner Hill? Go ahead and unmute yourself, Commissioner Hill.
All right, about that. Okay, um. Director Hand says uh this property, does it clear the U G tow lot that's being planned out now? Is it anywhere close to, or can you tell me where that would be on the aerial if, if possible?
Yes, I can go back to the aerial. Um, kind of see it there. There's, there we go. Um. First and foremost, those uh applications have been withdrawn. Um, so that case is not happening as of right now, but that was proposed for this parcel. This is currently zoned R one and then these parcels to the east currently zoned R one.
Okay, so it's been canceled. No longer are they looking at doing the U G tow area?
I believe the Unified Government is reassessing that project. The applications that were under review about six to nine months ago have been officially withdrawn.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions for the director? They sing none. Oh, I'm sorry, um, Mr. Minnis?
Yes, can you hear me, please?
Yes.
Uh, maybe one um, one clarification, uh, if you will, from, from the planning staff. On the uh fence to the north before we proceed with approval or hopefully approval. Um, we discussed with Michael Farley, the planning, planner chef at the time that. The, as you uh, along the north edge of the property, um, from about the center of the property. That extends to the west. It's very, the topography is very challenging. And I, we, we've, we'll find it very extremely difficult. Um, to build a fence. And in fact, I believe we uh confirmed with Mr. Farley that a fence. Uh, was not necessary, was not necessary to build at this time. Uh, going further east uh between the R one and the uh, and the, and the. Uh, M property uh on lot two, just because the, the, of the use that it is now, it's, it's uh being used as um. Kind of an industrial use there. And um, so I, I don't, I, I just want to see if there was a uh. Clarification on how much of a new fence does, does the city, will the city require?
Director Hand?
This is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Uh, let me go to, as you can see, the, the plat basically would cut a property to this and to that. The applicant is mentioning, or the applicant's representative is mentioning sort of the area farther to the west. Um, currently that site and the site to the north that was uh formerly um. Proposed for a U G development was kind of like a donation site for, for um, for dirt. And so there's a lot of. There's a lot of grade changes, elevation changes. Um, however, there is existing outside storage occurring. In what will be rezoned or is proposed to be rezoned as M two, which would require architectural screening. So staff's recommendation is that a fence would, would be needed for the entire northern and eastern property lines. If they wanted to separate. And designate what specifically would and would not be used for outside storage, we could fence that area instead. But as you can see in this picture. They're storing stuff. Across the whole property.
Okay. Is there a, any questions for the director? So the rec, kind of can you just, just clarify again, the recommendation on the fencing that's in the staff report?
All right, it's, it's code requires an architectural screen fence to set and, and a landscape buffer to, to separate any uh. Industrial zone from an adjacent or across the public right away, R one zone.
Okay, so that, that is what is included in the staff report unless it's changed here tonight. That's, that's the recommendation, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions for the director? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion. Janet, correct me if I'm wrong, any two change of zone and then master plan?
Uh, you need two motions, master plan first then change of zone.
Sorry, thank you. Okay, I'll need a motion, uh, Commissioner Ernst. This will be on the master plan amendment.
I move the Kansas City, Kansas City Planning Commission recommend approval of petition M P L twenty twenty one dash zero one zero.
Thank you.
Motion with the, does that include staff change to condition number one?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that clarification, Gunner?
That should include the change to condition number one, removing and constructing architectural screening fence at or before the subject property reuse southern boundary line. In order to prevent future encroachment or trespass.
Gotcha. I'm sorry, thank you. Okay, motion for approval with changes noted made by Commissioner Ernst. Is that a second, Commissioner Hill?
A second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded for approval of the master plan amendment as stated. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Hill?
Aye.
Huey?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the master plan amendment, subject to the revised conditions passes. Five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Now here, uh, stand for motion on the change of zone. Mr. Ernst?
I move the Kansas City, Kansas City Planning Commission recommend approval of petition Coz twenty twenty one day zero one three. Subject to all staff stipulations.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, point of clarification, does that include the amendment to condition number three?
Subject, subject to all staff stipulations. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Huey, is that a second from you?
Second.
Thank you. Motion uh made for approval by Commissioner Ernst uh with changes as noted or with staff stipulations as noted. Seconded by Commissioner Huey, any discussion on that motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Hill?
Aye.
Huey?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this change of zone application, subject to the revised conditions. Passes five in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This case will be heard once again on October twenty eighth at seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, we again have two items that we're gonna hear together. Master Plan Amendment, M P L twenty twenty one dash zero one two. William England. Master Plan Amendment from low density residential to neighborhood commercial at twenty three thirty two South Fourteenth Street. And change of zone application Coz twenty twenty one dash zero one seven. Change of zone from R one B, single family district to C P O, planned non-retail business district. For office based at twenty three thirty two South Fourteenth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated October eleven twenty twenty one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo, the notices to property owners. And the testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting tonight. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. England, welcome back. You are ready to go. Go ahead and start off with your name and address, please, and tell us about this project.
Thank you. This is Will England with C I one LLC and two, three, three, two, South Fourteenth Street. Um, both of these applications, the change of zone and master plan amendments are for changing this, this property from residential to commercial. Um, and at one point was operating under a non-conforming, illegal, non-conforming use. However, that is no longer standing and in order to run an insurance business out of the property now, we must rezone the property to low density commercial, I believe.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, none, I'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to? I've got Aaron Strika.
Aaron Strika, Roseville Development Association, fourteen oh three Southwest Boulevard. Uh, just wanted to say that R D A supports this application and thinks it's a, a good move for the neighborhood.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak in favor of, of or opposition to? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand for his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, you have two cases in front of you. One, the change from an R one B, single family district to C P zero. Oh, excuse me, planned non-retail business district as well as a master plan amendment from Lotus Residential to Neighborhood Commercial. This is in the Roseville kind of Shawnee Heights, if you will, um, neighborhood area. Uh, again, just off of South Fourteenth Street across from uh elementary school. Uh, you can see the current zoning there and a couple of pictures. Staff did have a couple of conditions of approval. Again, earlier this evening, the Board of Zone Appeals approved. Um, three variances uh for boza twenty twenty one dash zero two zero. Uh, again, as the applicant mentioned, what we have here is a non-conforming building. That lost its non-conforming use and to correct that in perpetuity, we are going through this process accordingly. Um, there are a couple of site improvements that I had mentioned at the Boza hearing earlier that I'll mention now instead. Essentially, the, we sought to um upgrade the property to meet commercial design guideline standards. Um, you can see a rendering of the building right here accordingly. Addition of ADA parking in the, again, that is technically in the public right of way. The applicant will have to seek a public right of way agreement with uh the Unified Government's Department of Public Works. Um, currently, the building has reflective glass that needs to change. They're gonna add an awning. They're gonna do some wainscoting. They're gonna extend the sidewalk, do a trash enclosure, things of that nature. Uh, to accommodate all of the, I believe it's seven parking stalls essentially outside of the building. Um, with those conditions, staff received until this evening, no letters of support, opposition. There are no NOVs. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion first on the master plan amendment. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the master plan amendment, case number N P L two zero two one dash zero one two. Subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion for approval made by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst? I see you nodding your head.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Motion approved made by Commissioner Jones and seconded by Commissioner Ernst. Any discussion on motion for approval on the master plan amendment? Seeing none, roll call.
Hill?
Aye.
Huey?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. I.
Ernst?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the master plan amendment, subject to the conditions in the staff report. Passes five in favor and none opposed.
Okay, and now the change of zone. Is there a motion? Mr. Jones?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve change of zone case number two, zero, two, one dash zero, one, seven, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Is there a second Commissioner Ernst?
Second.
Thank you. Motion to approve the change of zone made by Commissioner Jones and seconded by Commissioner Ernst. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Hill?
I.
Ewing?
I.
Jones?
I.
Miller?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the change of zone, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on October twenty eighth at seven P M. Before the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, our next application is change of zone application C O Z twenty twenty one dash zero, three, one, James Vans with integrity diversified holdings L L C. Change of zone from R one B, single family district to R two B, two family district. To reestablish a duplex which was converted into a single family home at two eighteen North Twelve Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated October eleventh, twenty twenty one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in further into the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does anyone on the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Vans, go ahead and give us your name and address, please, for the record and tell us about this project.
My name is Jim Vans. I live at ninety three fifty Nelson Lane in Kansas City, Kansas. And this is a property I bought as a rental and it was originally split as a duplex. There's no connection between the top floor and the full walkout basement. And it had been rented out as a duplex previously by the prior owner. Except that he had never split the utilities. It was rented as a duplex for a while, then there was a down zoning that took plates in the neighborhood back in, I believe, two thousand six. And the owner was living in one of the units and so. It was down zoned back to R one. Since then, the owner has passed away. I purchased it from the estate and plan to renovate the property after it's been vacant for some time. And would like to renovate it as a duplex and rent out both units to help ease some of the housing crunch in the area. The renovations of the top floor are currently underway. I'm doing it in two phases pending the outcome of this decision. And the basement is, I'm holding off on that to see what to do with it until I know for sure it can be done as a separate dwelling unit. But that's all I'm waiting on right now. I plan on splitting the utilities, at least the electric and gas, and have been in contact with B P U and Kansas Gas Service in regards to that process. The only thing I may not end up splitting is the water due to the excessive expense of having to run another tap to the main to get the second meter put in. And if I don't do that, then I would just pay that as the landlord.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vans, the when you spoke with B P U and gas company, did they indicate that? That would be, that was doable in terms of at this point splitting the utilities?
Yes, it's actually a fairly simple process. B P U indicated that they would just need to. I would just have to have a duplex meter base installed where the main power comes in and then splits at the two different meters to feed the two different. Electrical panels, main panels, and then the gas service can come in. They've got a process where I just need to apply. And they will come out and do basically the same thing with the gas where the main line will come in and then split and feed two separate meters.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. I'm seeing none, so we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Hey, Mr. Jones, this is going to handle your plan of design. Before I get started, can everybody see my screen? I apologize. I had to switch from from P D F to PowerPoint because I forgot to drop this one in.
Yes.
Okay. So again, we have before us a change of zone from R one B to R two B. This is a legal, not conforming duplex. The applicant mentioned that there was sort of a sweep of. Blanket sweep of R one zoning this prior to two thousand six, this kind of twelve block area of the central area of the central area master plan was all R P, R five, I believe. So this got cut up in that change of. That. Changes on across the neighborhood. Again, we're talking about the central area master, central area master plan. The property is actually uphill from the elementary school. The road. Twelve Street does not go through, so kind of at Tenny and Twelfth. Right where the, let's see if I can get a picture right, essentially where the road ends for the before. The elevation changed down to where Twelfth Street continues on the east side of the, excuse me, the west side of the elementary school. Happens there are, as the applicant had sort of alluded to, there are a couple of multiple N O Vs currently on the property that would need to be cleared up. Those are related to it being a vacant property for quite a long time. Again, the applicant is in the process of rehabbing the building and the property and we feel comfortable that can be cleared up accordingly. They will have to seek. Part of the conditions of approval or to obtain necessary building permits to to make the legal separation of the of the property into two into two separate units. As a part of that. Condition of approval, I believe, when the applicant seeks those building permits, our building inspections department will, I believe, require them to obtain two water. Meters. And the cost and expense associated with that. So I know that that was mentioned earlier and I just wanted to clarify, but that will be defined and cleared up through the building permit process. Staff also, as a condition of approval, had asked that the driveway apron. Be reconstructed there as R two B. It does require one parking stall for for each unit, so we believe there should be enough on that driveway accordingly. Again, staff has received no letters of support or opposition. I'd mentioned the multiple N O Vs that are being cleaned up as a part of this redevelopment process. Otherwise, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Okay, seeing none, I will stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve such. Applications and comments.
Motion approved made by Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Huey, is that a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion approved by made by Commissioner Jones and seconded by Commissioner Huey. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hill?
I.
Ewing?
I.
Jones?
I.
Miller?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to make to recommend approval of this change of zone application, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on October twenty eighth at seven P M. Before the Board of County Commissioners. I just wanted to let the record show that Daniel Kuhn has left the meeting and Patrick Waters' legal counsel has joined us.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, that now takes us to our special use permit. The first one is S P twenty twenty one dash zero, two, seven, seventy five, twenty one Nebraska Avenue. Special use permit for continuation of auto sales detailing and light repair at seventy five, twenty one Nebraska Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated October eleventh, twenty twenty one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in further into the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Mr. Chairman, I would also make a note that this application was held over from last month's meeting. For the applicant and staff to work together on a resolution. At this time, does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone here representing seventy five, twenty one Nebraska Avenue? Mr. Khalil or your representative? Are you in the audience tonight? Anyone here representing seventy five, twenty one Nebraska Avenue? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone in the audience. Gunner, are you aware of, were you guys able to work out a resolution? Is this going anywhere tonight?
That's going to recommend denial. The applicant, after multiple attempts, did not reach out or respond to our requests. The communicate we did receive is included in the updated staff report. The applicant is not willing to proceed with staff at this point and we were unable to get the information we need to move forward, so staff recommends denial.
Okay. Do we want to move this to the end of the agenda to see if they'll show up or do we want to handle it right now?
I believe if you read the email included as an exhibit, you will see that Mr. Khalil will not be showing up tonight.
Okay, then let's go ahead and go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that wanted to speak in favor of or opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. And I'm seeing none, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go back to Director Hand. Do you have any other final comments?
This is going to enter your plan of design. I would just say staff works. Attempted to work with the applicant up until this point. There were some changes in ownership that I think made it a little bit confusing. Additionally, the at our September hearing, as the when the applicant was present. They mentioned his sort of interpretation of. The code. In regards to the need for an S U P, I would just clarify that while the zone does notify the zoning category does. Note that it is an allowable use. That is one of a larger part of all of the code ordinances for the unified government. Those uses specifically also require this special use permit. So again, this is in the midtown area. Just north of State Avenue at the intersection of North Seventy Fifth Place and Nebraska Avenue, used to be an old car wash that was converted into a light auto. Again, staff had requested additional. Changes to the site plan and elevations based on the commercial design guidelines. We received some, but not all of those changes after multiple back and forths. As you know, these are sometimes complex rehabs and. To meet commercial design guideline standards. There's a, there are, there are violations on the property which staff was seeking to correct through this special use permit. Again, the applicant notified us that they will not be communicating with staff and will not provide me the information that staff had requested in order to complete this application. As such, staff recommends denial.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff on this case? Mr. Jones?
Gunner, I saw in the report and it was the real estate sign, so they're planning to sell the property. Is that what that? I can't see it fully, but.
If we captured it in one of.
In one of the pictures.
One of these pictures or not included, but. Yes, at our last site visit between the September agenda, excuse me, the September meeting and this meeting, we did go back out there and see if any improvements had been made. Because we had not received any communication from Mr. Khalil. We did notice the for sale sign. That could mean a bunch of different things. We don't, we don't really know.
Any other questions? Commissioner Hill?
I just noticed that the property looked really clean and like he was really trying to work with. What we were looking for, but I guess. It just looked like maybe he was going to have to fork out a lot more money for. A special use permit when he had one before. So I'm just trying to understand, I I just. On this particular one, I just don't understand. I saw that there was still a lot of different stuff we were requiring. And so maybe, you know, maybe it's just a fee didn't want to pay for. I'm not sure. I don't know. I'm just. This is just more of a comment more than a question, or maybe you can help me understand kind of what happens. I don't know. I just noticed that. The property looked relatively clean and neat. Looked like there were some improvements over time, but evidently this wasn't enough, so. I'm new, so I'm just asking.
Yeah, this is going to handle your plan of design. The case has taken a couple of turns. Originally, the renewal came in from a different applicant. And I believe Mr. Khalil was a part of the was originally the operator and not the owner. Typically, when you ask for improvements related to either the special use permit, which does. Which does require compliance with the commercial design guidelines. There are property upgrades. There was some confusion in that sense as Mr. Khalil then took ownership of the. Property or at least the ownership group that owned the property. So in between all of that S U P renewal, the applicant had actually never occupied the building from its first S U P approval. They had not, they had not yet received a certificate of occupancy. And so there were some upgrades that we were separately in parallel to this S U P renewal. Seeking or asking for Mr. Khalil in order to move forward with the operation of the of the original S U P while he sought this renewal. So. He had done significant work to get to this, to the temporary certificate of occupancy and certificate of occupancy. He then needed to come back and get an S U P, special use permits are. Are a specific period of time for a reason. We come back at each one and although we might renew them, it is essentially a new case and we look back at both the previous conditions of approval and any. Changes that staff feels need to be made as part of the new, or excuse me, the renewal. Again, there were multiple commercial design guideline standards, namely around pedestrian access. That were not being met that we have requested and I believe Mr. Khalil. As you say, was getting frustrated and didn't want to spend any more money and so had refused to continue to work with us. He could have come tonight and asked for deviations of said commercial design guidelines as instructed, but he didn't want to do that.
And thank you. Any further questions or comments? Commissioner Jones?
Director Hand, did Mr. Khalil, as far as you know, make an effort to find out? Some of what he needed to do prior to purchasing the property or did he not find out as far as you know, until after the purchase was made?
I believe. This is going to handle your plan of design. I believe he was somewhat aware as he was the operator of the supposed to be the operator of the property on. As it related to the original S U P approval. He. Because the the ownership group, as I understand it. No longer wanted to own it and Mr. Khalil wanted to get into his business and start operating it. He then took ownership of it. There was again some confusion about the difference between what he needed to do to get his T C O as a part of the original S U P and what he needed to do to get an S U P renewal. So we clarified that for him and with him. And at that point, I think he did not agree with some of the conditions of approval. And at some point was unwilling to work with us to make any changes, so. We're sort of are where we are right now.
Okay, the other thing that I would say that I noted, our our report says. That it indicates that there was a desire for the continuation of auto sales and then and expanded parts of the report, though. It looked like he was saying, no, that wasn't going to continue. So I mentioned it because that needs to be clarified depending on where this goes going forward.
Yes, this is going to handle your plan of designing in. What he said he was going to do with the property changed over time and as it changed, our requirements and conditions changed with it. That was part of the confusion, I believe, for Mr. Khalil. He then got it down to saying he was just going to. He then got it down to saying he was just going to repair, repair cars for a for-sale lot he owns outside of the unified government. So this is where he was going to bring his cars to get repaired and then sell them elsewhere. That raised some additional issues and concerns for staff. That was a, that was a change from the original, which was it was going to be a light auto repair. But if you read the exhibit that we added to the updated staff report, Mr. Khalil's email, it sort of started to hinge on in the last few, or in the last conversation I think we had with him, as, as demonstrated at the September agenda or the September hearing, Mr. Khalil was, was was not fully understanding the zoning ordinance itself.
Okay. Any further questions of the director, the recommendations for denial, and the applicant has not shown up this evening? Any other questions, or is there a motion? Mr. Jones?
I'm making a motion to deny case number SP two one dash zero two seven. And the denial, the reason for the denial is the continued outstanding unresolved issues and overall non-compliance. And all this is subject to staff stipulations and comments on the denial.
Thank you. Motion is made for denial for the reasons stated by the maker. Is there a second, Commissioner Ernst's?
Second emotion.
Thank you. Motion is for denial made by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Commissioner Ernst. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Hill?
Hi.
Yui?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, I must recommend denial of this application for the reasons outlined by Mrs. Jones. Pass this five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on October twenty-eighth, seven P M. before the Board of County Commissioners.
Our next special use permit is SP twenty twenty-one dash zero four seven, Albert H. Walker. Special use permit for horses on residential property at thirty-seven oh seven, I'm sorry, thirty-seven oh three, thirty-seven oh seven, and thirty-six thirty-three Bell Crossing, and thirty-seven oh one, thirty-seven oh two, and thirty-seven oh six, North Thirty-Seven Street, and thirty-six fifty-five Sorder Drive. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated October eleventh, twenty twenty-one. The application of their documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in accordance with the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Y dot echo, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us about this project. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Mr. Walker.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
This is Albert H. Walker. Address is fifty-seven fifty-eight Georgia Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one zero four.
Okay, and what are you gonna do out here?
Well, I got caught, I guess, in a catch twenty-two here. I bought some property that I, I was told, you know, it was three acres. Haven't been able to get it surveyed at the time, and they tell them I got one point, even though I had about two or three more pieces of land connected to that land. You can see I got several properties here. They tell me I only have one point fifty-two acres up there. The legal description that they have downtown is not incompatible with the size of that land. And so, you know, I was trying to get it surveyed, but I ran into another issue. They told me if I bought the land on both sides of those little driveways or eaves, whatever they call them, that, you know, the city probably would just let me have those. Kind of put a lot of money in that land. Now they tell me I got to get those two driveways surveyed. And haven't been able to do that, but anyway, I talked to a surveyor, and he was gonna come out and survey their land for eight hundred dollars, and then a week later, it jumped up to two thousand something dollars to have it surveyed. So my neighbor, if I got these direction right, they said where it is down there, it might be wrong. According how, which direction Bell Crossing and Sorder Drive is running. My neighbor east of me had his land surveyed. So my land started where his land stopped off at, and that's what we measured. Bought a three, three hundred feet tape. We measured from where his land stopped at to my land, and according to what we measured, and I, I turned that measurement into the city, and they looked at it. Whereas it, it was showing a lot of places where that land was only a hundred and six feet long at the south side of it. But tape measurement shows that land is, is two hundred and seven feet long. So you're talking about a different forty-seven feet, forty-seven point four feet on that little piece alone. The land I bought to the north, it showed that last E-way, that the land from that E-way up to where that land stopped at, it was two hundred and eight feet. And your map showed the same thing. So when you measured that two hundred and eight feet from that E-way, not even count that E-way, that land is four hundred and six feet point twenty-seven. I guess, and those two eaves, they was only, you know, I mean, one of them you couldn't even hardly see. It hadn't been worked or nothing. Nobody had did anything to it. And so I worked it in, they only seven foot wide each. One of that, that first one wasn't even that wide, but that, but that one was seven feet wide and forty-five, forty-five feet long.
Okay, but you don't have a survey that shows anything more than, than one point five five acres. Is that correct?
I don't have it surveyed, and that's what they say according to the numbers that they have downtown.
Okay.
But those numbers is not correct.
Okay, so we would need a survey to, to discredit those numbers then.
Well, that's what I've been trying to get, and, and your map showed, you know, one guy was telling me I own land across that street, which is ridiculous, like I was telling it later. I don't need that land. I don't need that hassle. My land is showing that it goes across Bell Crossing.
Okay, what, what, what can we do for you this evening?
Well, I was just trying to get a special permit for, because they said that what we put in for at first, we put in to have that entire community down there, change from residential back to agriculture. They said it was, they checked it. They said, even though they allowed all of that going on down there, they said that land was always residential, so I don't know. But the man even told us we could get it possibly. He didn't tell us we could definitely get it. But he told us we could possibly get it changed to agriculture. But somehow or another, some of the people down in there agreed to see in the man down there that had thoughted to change this land from residential to agriculture just one at a time. And he said he could see them quicker like that. So they agreed with that, which has messed all of us up. There's no way. I mean, I, I, you ain't even got to think to figure that out. There's no way in the world you can see thirty peoples two by two quick, and you can see all thirty of them at the same time and decide what you're gonna do or not.
Okay, so what we've got here tonight is one and a half acres, and you're requesting a special use permit to have livestock on that property. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And I also finna put in for a special permit for a container. I didn't know you could even get the special permit. They just told me that I had to move that container, period. I had two containers down there, which one was a forty-five foot container that I gave thirty-five hundred dollars for, trying to do what I was told to do.
Okay, but that isn't, that isn't part of what, that isn't part of what we're discussing tonight, though, because what I have in front of me says you're here to request a special use permit to keep livestock on the property.
Okay, alright.
So I can only deal with, I can only deal with one because that's all you've got here before us tonight?
Okay, sorry about that.
That's all right. So the only question I have for you is that, did you have a, a horse that was removed from another property?
A horse that came from another property?
Did you have one removed from another property? Animal Services said they removed a proper, removed a horse at thirty-seven oh seven Bell Crossing, which has your ownership.
Nah, nah, they removed the horse from down there. Okay, I didn't own that property then. That's what I tried to explain to them. That was not my property. That was not my horse. Now, I bought that property over this guy named Marvin. I, I halfway fed that horse. It was, it was right there connected to the property that I bought. The horse was so poor, them people down there was complaining about it. That's why some of them, I didn't call, but they called on it because their horse was just going to nothing. I started feeding that horse myself. It was not my horse. And I purchased that property after the time that they had removed that horse. I told them to check the record. I didn't, I didn't own that property then, and I definitely did not own that horse. I've had two occasions that they've accused me about animals, and neither one of them is true. That wasn't my horse. I, I bought that property from that boy. I was gonna give him five hundred dollars for it, just that little bit of lot on that corner there. I gave him four hundred dollars. I was gonna give him five. I mean, I was gonna give him another hundred dollars to make it five hundred dollars. I go downtown to register the property. That boy had owned that property for nine years and hadn't paid nine cent worth of taxes on it. They made me pay his back taxes.
Okay, so you didn't own the property. Marvin owned the property back when this horse situation occurred, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what else do you need to tell us tonight so we can, so we can move forward on your case?
Okay.
How many horses are you planning on keeping there tonight, or on that property?
Well, I told him I'd get on to four at least. I, I got a, a little buggy, one horse pulling, and we ride two or three. That's all. But, but the other, I'm finna sell them.
So how many horses, how many horses do you have right now?
Nine horses and two colts.
Nine, you have nine horses and two colts?
Yes, sir.
And where are those being kept right now?
Some of them is being kept down the hill at that property I, I just purchased. I think that's that, the thirty-six, thirty-six fifty-five down in that area, thirty-six fifty-five and thirty-seven oh one.
So you got those.
So the neighbor man bought.
I'm sorry. No, you go ahead.
I just said a neighbor man bought that thirty-seven oh one. He knew I wanted the property, and they was having a sale, which I didn't know about themselves, but they was having a sale. He bought the property, but he turned around and sold it back to me. Showed me the paperwork, sold it back to me, the same thing what he paid it for. And so I, I got a few down there, and they got plenty of room to run around. But I, I kind of boxed them in since then. I had to change my fence. They told me to change the fence. It was, it had Bob wire up, and they said we couldn't have Bob wire. I went and bought wire and put wire up, and I bought six foot wire trying to keep the horse in, make sure I keep him in. Then I had to take six feet wire down and put four feet wire.
Okay, let, let, let me try to summarize this. So right now, you've got one and a half acres or one point five five. You got nine horses and two colts currently being held somewhere near thirty-six fifty-five sorter, and you want permission to, to get a special use permit so that you can have those horses on this property. Is that correct? On all these parcels here you've got listed?
Yes, sir, but I don't have to keep all of those horses. I, I, I can understand you telling me I got too many horses, but I, I was telling them I'm gonna try to at least keep four. Like I said, I, I got, got the one down there that pulled that buggy, and we ride two or three.
Okay, so you got the, you got the buggy horse, and you'd like to have two or three more?
Yes, sir, for riding purposes.
Okay, anything else?
Well.
I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure I got it right.
It's all on this. That's all on this.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna go ahead and see if there's any questions from the commissioners. Okay, Commissioner Jones?
Mr. Walker, did you communicate directly with the Animal Services Unit about your concerns?
Did I communicate with them?
Yes, the reason I ask that is because in our report, Animal Services, and I know you're saying you didn't own that property at thirty-seven oh seven Bell Crossing, and it's, it's not listed within the cadre of addresses that, that we have in our report. So for me, that's a disconnect in terms of what Animal Services is saying, where they're saying they confiscated a horse, and then also it's saying, and the surrounding area where the addresses are not discernible. To me, that means that because your property is closed, even though you don't own thirty-seven oh seven Bell Crossing, it, it appears that Animal Services couldn't really distinguish, you know, who owned the horse, who owned the land, but they confiscated a horse. And I think with what you're wanting, I mean, my suggestion would have been, make sure that if you don't think Animal Services had it correctly, that you shared that with them or documented, so, you know, they wouldn't be thinking that you own the property where this horse was classified as being severely neglected and that they confiscated, ended up confiscating the horse.
Well, ma'am, I tried to explain that to them when they got the horse. It was two more of my neighbors down there explaining that to them. It was not my property. I'm not boasting or bragging or nothing about it, about it, ma'am, because it's me. But anybody down there would tell you, when it come down to feeding the horse, taking your horse, they keep telling me I'm the craziest thing they ever seen. Okay, I feed my horse even pallet, even during the winter. I got probably some of the fattest horses down there. I sell horses down there from time to time. You know, I don't really sell them. I give them away. I sold a horse for six hundred dollars. Everybody tell me I should have got no less than fifteen hundred dollars, about four horses like that. But I was trying to help these young men. They were getting started. I got accused for not only that horse, I got accused for another horse that I was neglecting, that I was not neglecting. A friend of mine had the horses and called me and asked me, could I come and, and help him with them? I went and got those two horses, and I called a vet. The vet came down there, looked at them. I got some medicine and everything, and I saved one of them. M Control came down there. They went on my property without me giving them permission. They thought it was Ms. Christine Wild's property. She was down there. So she let them own there and showed them the horses and everything. So they charged me for that, and the judge dropped most of that out, throwed it out, because I proved it was not my horses. It was a friend of mine's horses. I was trying to revive the horses. So I got two cases that they put against me that really never should have been charged to me. But in regards to that, I, I, I probably got off track again. All I want to do is, you know, keep me about four atoms on that property. Yeah, I, I've been trying to buy five acres down there, but every time I look around, it's not there to be, be purchased.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Walker? Seeing none, we're going to go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to the public, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, we'll go to Director Han and get his comment.
Hey, Mr. Jones, this is gonna end Director Plan and Design, again, uh, Mr. Walker seeking this, uh, special use permit to keep uh, horses on his property. This is in the sorter drive area um, of uh, of the Unified Government. Um, I think we've had multiple cases in the sorter drive area, so everybody kind of knows the character of that neighborhood. Uh, Mr. Walker's coupled together multiple parcels here, I believe this is actually incorrect. This parcel right here, if you can see my cursor, should not be included in this black line, but if you put them all together, it's it's not even one point five acres, you might be able to get one point five acres if you were to vacate what is currently plotted as to um, I believe alleyways that quite frankly were there and, and plotted in a different time when, when this was potentially proposed to be developed for different purposes, but um, I don't think if, if and when in the future, Mr. Walker saw a vacation of these properties, or these uh, these two pieces of land that sort of indent into his uh, um, multiple properties here, that staff would have any problem with it, but again, it wouldn't get him anywhere close to the to the five acre minimum for an agricultural zone property. Um, just a couple of photos for the, for the project, and while I did that, he, uh, the Conservation District um, for, that we, that is our reviewing agency for cases like this, does not recommend approval of this SUP. Um, there are, um, if the Planning Commission decides to move forward with a recommendation of approval, um, staff does have multiple uh, conditions of approval we'd like to address at that time. Um, again, the, the condition of the property in the opinion of the Conservation District is not, uh, is not eligible or should be allowed to board horses. That does not mean Mr. Walker can't um, bring horses onto the property during the day and, and do what he made for them, but we do, they do not recommend overnight boarding of any horses. Uh, again, uh, if uh, the can, if uh, the commission wants to entertain the motion of approval, I would, I would ask that um, I, I can be given time to outline some of those conditions of approval. Um, accordingly, uh, the other thing to note here is there is an open, you know, beyond the case for um, uh, structural permits in regards to Mr. Walker's clubhouse in particular. Um, so there are a couple violations on the property, thus far staff has not received any letters of support or uh, opposition. We have to go with our Conservation District on this one, recommend approval, or excuse me, denial.
Questions for Director Han? Commissioner Jones?
Director Han, I, I don't know, maybe I misheard, I know there's been communication with Animal Services, but we had a similar case where uh, we requested the petitioner to get with the Conservation Department. Now, I, I hear you saying they don't recommend approval for this, but has there been, as far as you know, direct communication between the Conservation Department and Mr. Walker?
This is gonna end Director Plan and Design. I believe so, I would have to confirm, I know that the Conservation District was able to see um, uh, was able to view the property and, and provide the recommendation. Very often when we, when we have cases require Conservation District approval, they're of a size that, uh, they can't necessarily a size or topography where they can't necessarily see what's going on, um, but Conservation District felt confident enough to move forward with this recommendation. Now, again, if the recommendation of approval would have required a conservation plan, so that would be part of it, if you wanted to move forward with conservation, with a recommendation of approval, we'd ask that if you continue, sorry, conservation plan could be heard, but that conservation plan I do not think would change too drastically from what is within the staff report as it relates to ground cover, as it relates to fencing. Um, again, this is an R one zone property, and technically you can't have barbed wire in R one zone properties, and technically you can't have accessory structures without a primary structure in R one zone properties, so there's multiple violations on the property as well.
There's no questions, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Jones?
I'm sorry, so if you get, I guess my, my thing, I just want to be sure that previous case that I see is similar. It seemed, as I recall, that we encouraged the petitioner to get with Conservation Department directly to see if they could work some things out. And what kind of concerns me about this is their business between, he thinks, Mr. Walker thinks he bought three acres, yet it's, we're saying it's one point five two acres, I get the topography and all of that, but um, I don't know if it, if it will make too much difference, it just seems like he needs to know exactly what he needs to do, and I'd like clarification on is it, if, if he's gonna be denied based in part on acreage, yet that's kind of up in the air. I just see some unresolved issues is the bottom line.
It's only up in the air because the applicant has chosen not to get a survey, which would make that clarification clear to him. And the applicant is in charge of, the applicant's in charge of getting that clarification, am I right, Gunner?
Um, this is gonna end Director Plan and Design, uh, yes, it is the, it is the onus is on the applicant to get a survey, but that is not, the size of the property is not one of the reasons for denial, it's the, it is the condition of the property that are the reasons for denial.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
And if I, if I may, a special use permit was noted a little bit earlier for a container, uh, just as a point of clarification from Mr. Walker's future reference, um, if he were to seek an SUP for the storage container, it would be for a temporary use of land, which has a maximum of two years of approval, which means it basically gives you two years to figure out a permanent solution to store whatever you're putting in that storage container, it is not something that you can keep on the property for the long term.
Further questions for the director? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to deny SP, case number SP two zero two one dash zero four seven for unresolved violations and the type of land incompatibility to have livestock.
Thank you, motion is made for denial uh, by Commissioner Jones due to suitability of the property for its intended purposes, and is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
I was gonna ask Ms. Jones if she would consider putting the report from the Conservation Department in there as well? That's one of the reasons.
Absolutely, I would, I'll modify the motion to include the comments, the report from the Conservation Department.
I would second that motion.
Alright, motion made for denial due to suitability and for uh, comments made by the Conservation Department. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Ernst, is there any discussion on the motion for denial? Seeing none, roll call please.
Hill?
Hi.
Huey?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend denial of this special use permit for the reasons outlined by Commissioner Jones passes, five in favor and none opposed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walker, this will be heard once again before the Board of County Commissioners on October twenty-eighth at seven PM, so you, uh, you've got one more, one more chance to plead your case, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next application is special use permit, SP twenty twenty-one dash zero six seven, Weston Sparks with Ride Forever Skate Park. Special use permit to operate a skate park and skate school at two thirty South Sixty-Fifth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachment dated October eleventh, twenty twenty-one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in accordance with the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wind dot echo and the notices to property owners. Mr. Chairman, this application, along with the changes on in the master plan amendment, were held over from last month's meeting to this month. Um, does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. uh, excuse me, Mr. Sparks? Go ahead and give us your name, I'm sorry, Mr. Hutton, I got you queued up to speak.
Hi, okay. Hello?
Yes, Mr. Sparks, I got you queued up along with Mr. Hutton, I'm assuming he's working with you on this project?
Okay, yes, uh, Weston Sparks, forty-nine forty-six, Halsey Street, Shawnee, Kansas, six six two one six. Uh, I'm looking for, to operate my indoor skate park at that location, um, I Ride Forever's been open since two thousand eight, ran in Lenexa, and I took it over about four years ago, and I built the indoor skate park there. Uh, I was moving because they were doing a remodel and rent was gonna go way up, so uh, looking to uh, you know, host my, my skate school there, which uh, will get kids off the couch and learn how to skate. Uh, it's the only indoor skate park in Kansas City, Kansas. Um, the hours are noon to seven, noon to five Sunday. The um, though I'm not much else to say, the, the skate community needs an indoor park, so that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hutton, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Extremely briefly, William W. Hutton, five oh nine Armstrong, Kansas City, Kansas. My office represents Dan Jansen, the owner of the property, as well as Weston Sparks. Mr. Sparks has set out what he's proposing to do. It's important that you all understand, all we're asking for tonight is a special use permit. The issue on the uh, requested rezoning by my client Dan Jansen has been put off to the December meeting of the Planning Commission. Uh, I would tell you this property is located in a transitional industrial area with some longstanding residential, but primarily industrial, including done construction. Uh, this is four point seven two acres, we're only talking about a special use permit for eight thousand square foot for the skate park. Uh, my clients, Mr. Sparks and Mr. Jansen, agreed to the stipulations as submitted by the planning staff, and we would ask you to go ahead and approve the special use permit. And again, we'll come back to you with more details on our requested rezoning uh, for community um, commercial district in December. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative? Seeing none, we'll open up the public portion of the meeting, anyone in, in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request tonight, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, we'll go to Director Han and get his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is gonna end Director Plan and Design, as Ms. Parker mentioned, this case was uh, continued from the September uh, agenda. Um, when we met with the applicant, we decided to split it, this, this specific SUP uh, from the changes on in master plan amendment, as the applicant mentioned earlier uh, in his comments. Um, essentially, uh, let me just move through real quick, this is in the Riverview area, if you will, just north of Cal Drive. Uh, again, it is adjacent to J E Dunn, uh, and you can't see it, but just north of the page is the first Amazon facility constructed a couple of years ago. Uh, it's a former school, um, which is allowed in, in our residential zone, R one zoning, you can see a few pictures here. Um, now because the changes zone and the master plan amendment have been separated from this SUP, there's a condition of approval to do a um, to come back and is, and go through a plan review to adjust the new use um, uh, to the standards in uh, uh, of that new use. Um, typically in an SUP, we would go through kind of a plan review, and if we needed it, um, again, this is a commercial use, uh, if we needed it, we would uh, uh, address different site and building improvements. Um, but because those are being carried with the potential of a change of zone of the master plan amendment, um, what we're doing here is saying, uh, they have to come back within six months for a plan review, so let's go hypothetically, if this moves forward and the changes on in a master plan amendment do not, a plan review is required, if the changes on in master plan uh, amendment are approved hypothetically next month, those would carry the site review and, and elevation reviews, so um, it's sort of, uh, we're timed to keep moving them both forward, and this is kind of the way that we figured, uh, we could do that. The other condition of approval is, um, Mr. Sparks is not renting the entire building, so we asked that the building be partitioned um, the, for his leasable space and the rest of, and the rest of the building. Uh, other than that, um, staff has received no letters of support, opposition, there are some old, you know, uh, notices of violations on the property, but none related to this case, again, none that can be, um, none that couldn't be addressed, and, and again, either a plan review or the potentially changes on master plan amendment. Staff recommends approval, this one, we're gonna need to amend a condition as well, because we did not specifically say the number of years, so staff recommends approval for two years.
Alright, thank you, any questions for Director Han?
Oh, and I apologize, there was a letter of support, I apologize.
Alright, thank you. Questions for Director Han? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Uh, Commissioner Ernst?
Move the Kansas City, Kansas City Planning Commission recommend approval of petition SP twenty twenty-one dash zero six seven, subject to all staff stipulations.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Ernst, is that a second, Commissioner Hill?
A second.
Thank you, any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call please.
Hill?
Hi.
Huey?
Mr. Hill? Thank you.
Jones?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this special use permit for two years, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, gentlemen, this will be heard once again on October twenty-eighth before the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner Huey, we lost your camera. I'm not sure if that was by design, there we go.
Chairman, our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty-one dash zero six eight, Jill Schultz with K nine club, special use permit for a doggy daycare at two two one South Twenty-Second Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachment stated October eleventh, twenty twenty-one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in accordance with the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wind dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Ms. Schultz, I've got you queued up, ready to speak, go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us about your project.
Sure, uh, I'm Jill Schultz, uh, two two one South Tw- Twenty-Second Street. I've owned K nine club for twenty years, as of September fifteenth. I've been at this location for several years, and I'm just trying to uh, get my special use permit renewed. We've cleaned up the area, and I know that the neighbors definitely like us at this location, um, it's at the end of a dead end street, and we take dogs there uh, Monday through Friday, I do not board dogs, they, it's basically a mobile doggy daycare. And we're there from about, oh, noon to three, three thirty every day, or Monday through Friday. And then we take the dogs home, and that's been my business for twenty years.
So you've got a little bit of experience there?
Yeah, a little bit.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ernst?
Uh, speaking for Mr. Conley, can you tell us why this was allowed to lapse for so long?
Um, well, it was June of twenty twenty, so we were in the middle of COVID. And I had talked to Janet Parker and apparently fell through the cracks some way, and also I was a little unsure of as I'm sure so many businesses were, if I was going to get to continue to uh, do my do my business. And luckily, I didn't skip a day uh when COVID came out and haven't yet, so um, I just, it was something that fell through the cracks. I I never got anything in the mail or anything, we'll get it renewed. And I apologize if I ever missed anything, but I think over the years, you can see my track record has been pretty well, pretty good with you guys.
Your track record has been very good, but it will always be in your best interest to follow when it expires and to make sure it's followed up on.
Sure, I under, I completely take responsibility for that.
That was it. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we'll go over to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Saying none, we'll close the public meeting, and we will go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is going to handle our planning and resign. Again, this is an SUP for a dog daycare. Uh, this is in the, oh, that map is incorrect. This is in the central area master plan. It's uh right about there. Um, you can see the property right here at the end of the road, as the applicant mentioned. Um, there are a couple of conditions of approval related to this case. Again, this is their third approval, second renewal. Um, there are hours of operation. Um, uh, and we do have it as a thirty-dog uh maximum um for the uh business. You can see some pictures here. It is gated. Um, staff has not received any letters of support or opposition. There are no NOBs. There were a couple of police reports noted in the in the staff report, but that was the applicant making police calls for um some issues that she'd had uh with people intruding on her lands. Those aren't to be held against her, of course. Um, the current recommendation is approval for five years, but as is the procedure for SUPs that have had no issues, staff would consider an amendment to that by the planning commission of ten years if they see fit.
Alright, thank you. Questions for the director? Saying none, I'll stand for a motion. Anyone? Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve subject stipulations and comments.
Yeah, motion to approve made by Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Miller, is that a second? Thank you. Been uh moved and seconded for approval. Is there any discussion? Mr. Hughie?
Uh, just a question in regards to the length of the permit. Staff suggested that we could um extend the permit for ten years. Wanted to ask the maker of the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones, can you clarify the length of time for this for this approval?
Yes, let me, let me, I'm at the point of discussion, Director Hand, on five-year versus ten-year. I know you said ten-year, but uh, there's nothing that usually needs to be checked, then no concerns with regard to the difference between the five-year and ten-year.
This is going to enter your planning design. Uh, yes, I believe, uh, I believe that is correct. Um, it's not required for us to go up to ten, but the code does allow up to ten after first date two and then a five-year approval. So we are at that threshold. You can do it for five. You can do it for two if you wanted.
Okay, but I I, given what you said about no problems or anything, then I'll adjust, I'll amend my motion to uh specify ten years.
For, I'm sorry, for how many?
Ten years.
Ten years, okay. Is that okay with the second, Commissioner Miller? Okay, motion on the floor is for renewal of the uh special use permit for a period of ten years. Any discussion? Saying none, roll call, please.
Hill?
I.
Yui?
I.
Jones?
I.
Miller?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this special use permit for ten years, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on October twenty-eighth at seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners.
Alright, thank you very much.
You bet.
Mr. Chairman, our next application is plan review application PR twenty-twenty-one dash zero-two-four. Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I know that I'm not going to be able to pronounce his name, so I'm just going to go on and say preliminary and final plan review for a church at twelve-seventy, Merriam Lane. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated October eleven, twenty-twenty-one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in accordance with the case and contained in the official file, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
I've got twelve-seventy, Merriam queued up to speak. I'm assuming that might be Annalee Polanco?
Yes, and Carlos Cameron is going to be um answering any questions for them and small translations.
Okay, so go ahead and give me both your names and please an address.
My name is Carlos Cameron. I'm a member of the church. My address, nine-twenty-one Hayward, Independence, Missouri.
Okay, go ahead and tell us about this project, please, if you would, Mr. Cameron.
This is in a str- a little strip mall, Merriam Lane, and we are asking permission or rezoning or whatever we have to do to open a church of thirty-five to forty members.
Sorry, I'm pulling up the case here on my computer.
And we've agreed to do all the the things that the planning department has asked us, the trees, the dumpster, the bike rack. Everything they've asked us, we've agreed to do. Uh, we've been working on this project for close to a year now. We kinda um came out a couple of roadblocks through things because we didn't really understand how hard this really was going to be. Um, and when we leased the property, we weren't told by the owner that it would be so complicated. Um, but at the end of that, we're we're looking to get permission for rezoning. We've done everything that they've asked us to do. And we're going to have thirty-five to forty members. We got plenty of parking. We got plenty of everything we're going to need.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Gunner or Janet, I am not finding the case on my online records. Maybe I'm missing it. PR twenty-twenty-one dash zero-two-four, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not seeing it on the site. I'll go back to my email log. Okay, go ahead. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, saying none, we'll go ahead and go to the public, and I've already got Aaron Straka.
Aaron Straka, uh, Roseville Development Association, fourteen-oh-three, St. Louis Boulevard. Um, I I also did not see the staff report online, so one of my questions was if somebody could go over what's on it at some point. Um, but just wanted to say that Roseville Development Association supports this project. Um, this location is a fine location for a church, and this building in particular has been in need of some love for a long time, um, and this group has really spruced it up. It looks really nice. We're really glad to have them there, so we support what they're doing.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Okay, saying no, we'll close the pub course meeting. We'll, public portion of the meeting, we'll go to Director Hand for his comments and some clarifications on the staff report.
I'm going to handle your planning and design. Apologize for the staff report not being uploaded. Um, we do have it on the agenda tonight, obviously, so I'll do my best to go through everything that we discussed. Again, this is for for a church in an existing strip mall right off Merriam Lane in the Roseville area. Um, you can see the site here is a relatively close to um Turkey Creek, but it is along Merriam Lane where we do have bike lanes. Um, and uh, we did see that right away improvement a few years ago. Uh, so staff had uh had several conditions of approval related to the property. Um, specifically that they, um, as a part of adding their ADA compliance, that they create a pedestrian connection from the front door to the sidewalk. Um, there was some additional landscaping and screening uh noted, which you can see here in some of these issues. Um, we had some standard conditions that we applied to downlighting um as well as, um, you can see the floor plan here. Um, and let me get to the full conditions here, as well as that bicycle parking that they mentioned. Um, it is a, it is a storefront with tinted windows. Um, again, so essentially what we're trying to do here is bring it up to commercial design guideline standards for this commercially zoned property. Um, including the trash receptacle. So we didn't go full bore on all the commercial design guidelines, but we did ask for some improvements um associated with it. We also asked the applicant to provide a parking agreement as we were, uh, we we weren't able to determine if they were going to meet parking requirements. There's plenty of parking on the site. Uh, we just asked for sort of an after the fact, uh, the agreement as part of the release accordingly. Um, let me go back to this one. We did receive no letters of opposition. We did receive a letter of of support um from the, from uh, uh, from adjacent property owners or businesses. Um, staff recommends approval of those conditions, and I would recognize Ms. Parker briefly before we open it back up to the commission.
Just a point of clarification for the chairman and um staff, I guess, but uh I did go back and check the emails. It was emailed for that went out to the commission. It was with SP sixty-eight. Why, I don't know why it was missed on the website.
Yes, we 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 do have it in our packets.
Okay.
I do have the case in front of me. I just could not find it on the, when I'm looking at it online, I'm looking through the through the the online reports, but it is in our staff reports, so we we did have it for review. Um, further question, or questions for the director? Saying none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve subject staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Uh, motion approved made by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second, Commissioner Hughie?
Yes, second.
Thank you. Motion for approval again made by Commissioner Jones, a seconded by Commissioner Hughie. Any discussion on that motion for approval? Saying none, roll call.
Hill?
I.
Yui?
I.
Jones?
I.
Miller?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this plan review, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on October twenty-eighth at seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners. We have one more item left on our agenda, but we, it has been requested that we take a break, so we're going to take a
Looks like they just have approval.
Uh, we're going to take a five-minute break, and uh then we'll return here the last item on our agenda, which is the Armadale Master Plan. I appreciate everyone's patience. Thank you. Yeah, as soon as we get staff back online, we'll go ahead and get started, and we'll wrap things up.
I was in the same boat you were, Jeff, looking for the church.
Okay.
I knew I'd read it thoroughly. I could see the pictures, but I couldn't find it anywhere.
I I I knew the building in my head, so that's why I knew it was there, and then I was second guessing everything by trying to find it. I was just kind of scrambling. Okay, once we have Janet and Patrick back, we'll we'll finish up. Okay, Commissioner Hill and Patrick, are you both with us? Thank you. Okay, we're going to reconvene, and we're going to call our last item, which is the uh Armadale Master Plan. Who's going to, who's going to run that tonight? Is that going to be Gunner?
Mr. Chair, this is going to enter your plan and resign. I'm going to pass it off to our uh lead planner for our advanced planning division, Ms. Kim Portillo.
Okay, great, Kim.
Hello, good evening, commissioners. We are so glad to be back here with you guys tonight, presenting our final version of the Armadale Area Master Plan. You guys saw this last month. As a quick run-through, we took comments, and now we are here tonight to present you with the final draft of this. So with that, I'll go ahead and pass it on to Andrew with Port and let him get going on. With Port and let him get going on his presentation.
Okay. Hello, everyone. This is Andrew Modra with Port. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, just fine. Thank you.
Hey, I'm gonna share my screen. Please give me another thumbs up if you can see the 3D model of Armadale there. Okay. Great. Well, so thanks again for making time to hear about this Armadale Area Master Plan process. We've been carrying out over the last nine plus months. We walked through this in a little bit more detail a month ago. And the idea tonight is just to really highlight just a quick overview, you know, the, if, if you've all had a chance to see what is very close to a very final report, it is extensive. And we're very proud of it. And it's been a very long and thorough process. And we've tried to incorporate everything we possibly could from what we've heard and seen from residents, stakeholders, you name it. We've tried to fold all into this report and it's taken a lot of time and space. So here you see the most recent schedule. We convened here Monday, September thirteenth. After that, we hosted a community open house at the Armadale Community Center to review the draft master plan. It was a planning empowerment and, and draft master plan review event that was there all afternoon that Thursday. We also had our ninety-ninth steering committee meeting with the steering committee that has met, I guess this is nine since Port and, and our team, the planning team joined the process. It's probably about a dozen and all over the last year to meet with stakeholders and residents and UG staff to work on this process together. We had the informational presentation of the Board of Commissioners on the thirtieth. Here we are tonight on the eleventh. And then later this month, we'll have the, another presentation of the Board of Commissioners. So here all, here is everything I listed there, at least over the last nine months. And we're, again, where we've been trying to combine, combine everything, compile everything to cap off this process with a really thorough document. Just to elaborate a little bit on the engagement process, we talked a little about last time, but that we tried to work closely with the Armadale community by hiring and teaming with members of the community to be part of our outreach team to bring online and printed surveys to their neighbors and friends to really have one-on-one and candid conversations about the priorities for the master planning process. We coupled that with posters around local businesses and postcards. That were also surveys that could be filled out at local businesses or and then we had the website. You could go to the ArmadaleStrong.com website to provide stories, feedback. We actually had a voicemail box. If you called a phone number, you couldn't even just call in and leave messages for the planning team. We hosted numerous workshops during the process, ranging from public health and wellness to economic development to just neighborhood focus groups as far as master plan priorities and then public event at John Fisk, two events at John Fisk Elementary. But one was more of a block party in format. And again, these regular meetings with community leaders, both individually and as part of the steering committee. So that really formed the basis of the master plan priorities. Again, the first master planning process since nineteen seventy-nine. In conjunction with that, we conducted a really rigorous existing conditions and site analysis. That was also strengthened by work from Merricord Vista at the UG and the KCDC Design Studio that was conducted last spring. Through, that also again carried out a bunch of research that was in parallel to this and that we shared. All of this was to again, understand Armadale and its history and context within Kansas City, both its very unique condition in the floodplain of the Kansas River. As a residential community there, but also just as its role with the industrial and labor history legacy in Kansas City, as well as the really rich Hispanic heritage of the Armadale neighborhood that, you know, continues to this day. Also this legacy of segregation and redlining and displacement and population decline and disinvestment, the, obviously the flood history contributes heavily to that. And this, where we see ourselves at the current day with this, again, very unique pocket of a residential community surrounded entirely by rails, river and industrial uses. Here you see an image of that. So, and then here's a few, a kind of catalog of, of the housing stock of Armadale. So really, again, to summarize this area, it's disinvested, isolated, vulnerable, segregated, neglected, without this kind of commitment to Armadale's future either over this limbo of, of future flooding or government decree of displacement and, you know, no longer living in the floodplain. We've, you know, heard over and over again, it was never really in question throughout this entire process. After we got into a little ways that this place has the potential to be just an amazing place that stimulated, accessible, safe and powered, included and attractive. And that the neighborhood wants to be there and wants to see this investment and improvement in the Armadale, you know, community and broader Armadale area. So very, I'll just really quickly summarize these five focus areas. That we coupled with actions and strategies in the, the master plan document that you can really read through line by line that out, that look at these five areas and all of the different strategies that kind of came to the top of the planning process and the priorities list through the steering committee and the community. So first was looking at the neighborhood core. This has the longest list of strategies and I won't read them all, but they really range on new housing and implementing housing first projects. Looking at a ways to kind of strengthen the neighborhood core of the Armadale community. And a really big one I want to point out is increasing the capacity of Armadale community-based organizations. The Armadale Renewal Association being a really critical and important piece of the future revitalization and enhancement of the, of Armadale. So that's one of the, that's one of the ones that came to the very top of this long list of strategies that are again outlined in the report. The second was the community, the commercial corridors. So Osage Avenue, Kansas Avenue, Tenth, Twelfth, Argentine, these areas that historically were, were commercial mixed-use corridors oriented around a kind of walkable neighborhood street serviced by streetcars. Historically, we're trying to build upon that kind of structure and the potential for Osage, for example, to be the very heart of the neighborhood once again. And so we had a list of strategies here that range from, you know, bus stops to encouraging certain types of infill that encourage walkability, as well as enhancing the quarters themselves. Building upon like the Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi loans that will allow integration of green infrastructure and other ways that we can piggyback on infrastructural upgrades to again, create a more walkable and neighborhood oriented community center. The third is the industrial ring, both the close industries that border the neighborhoods, but also just broader Armadale itself. And there were a number of strategies outlined in the, in the report related to expanding access to recruitment services to bring businesses to Armadale, expanding space and piloting, you know, high performing industrial parcels that would encourage again, green infrastructure and reducing heat island and capturing stormwater and a number of just ways again to increase the, the sustainable operation of industry in Armadale. The, the Kansas River was the, the third, really looking at the Kansas River or fourth, sorry. Looking at the Kansas River as an asset for both Armadale, which has very little, very, a very small relationship to the river. Currently as far as access, recreation and use of the river, but also for Kansas City at large, the idea that this is an incredible this asset, a cultural asset, historic asset, and something that we should kind of connect to and celebrate and occupy and, and have as kind of part of the identity of this geography. So there were a few strategies related to that. And then I'll wrap up with the West Bottoms. Which we were looking at a few different scenarios. One of the strategies that came to the fore for this was essentially that the West Bottoms, the historic West Bottoms deserves its own. We recommend, it just really needs its own master plan study, essentially diving into it with a really adept, looking at transportation connectivity. The market and potential different, you know, prioritizing different routes for how this neighborhood or this area of Armadale could trans, be transformed in the future. So one of the scenarios was a mixed-use district that was oriented again, more around living on the river and maybe more of an extension of the, some of the projects near the Hy-Vee Arena focused on riverfront residential and mixed use. But it could also go a route toward a riverfront destination where it could be more civic oriented. As the kind of foundation of a plan for this area. And finally, a logistics or industrial hub as one option where that could be a really, you know, twenty-first century and very forward-thinking look at how logistics and riverfront and green infrastructure and really be a kind of leading development for logistics and distribution here in Armadale. So those are the three, but going back to the list. It was really most the highly recommended that there was just a really more careful feasibility and planning study undertaken for that area. So that's the, I tried to aim for five minutes since we've seen this a month ago, a little, probably a little longer, but that's the big overview of what is about a two hundred and sixty-page document, I think at this point, that really is again, putting a lot of effort and energy into trying to think about the future of what Armadale could be. So I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Andrew. Questions from commissioners? I, I guess I have one. What was the reaction to the citizens? When the, when the surveys were conducted in the one-on-one meetings, were they, were they pleased to see that somebody was taking an interest in their community?
That's how, I mean, I, I can't speak for, for all the citizens, but I would say most of the conversations that I had were mostly about, yeah, there was really a kind of an, an interest in participating and sharing kind of stories and priorities. And to me, the, the ones that stuck out the most were really about everyday life and about, you know, I go to school here, I work here. We don't walk on these streets because the, the trucks are too fast and loud and we take the alley and really a lot of personal stories and sharing about this picture of a, a, a strong community, but one that there's just some, some that would just raise time and time again, some of the kind of day-to-day struggles with in, you know, infrastructure, industry. Access. And, and so I, I, I think overall, I think at beginning, we started this months ago, there was some skepticism and maybe curiosity about whether we're gonna I don't know, if we were just kind of dropping in and we're gonna go away, but I think after however, almost a year of this process of kind of returning time and time again and having a really engaged process, I feel like there was a a kind of recognition that we're really trying to hear from as many people as we possibly can.
Okay, so there was some mistrust maybe from at, at the beginning.
Mistrust, I would say is strong. I, I didn't personally
Skepticism probably is a better word.
Yeah, skepticism, I guess skepticism about whether again, like, are you here today? You know, we're kicking off this process. Are you here today and gone tomorrow? But I think after weeks and months, you start to prove that we're really trying, especially during COVID, to reach as many people personally as we can.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Don't have any questions, just some comments. And I'll basically reiterate what I put in my comments that I sent to Kim that she requested. I see this whole situation as a better late than never kind of thing, because as you all know, for decades, Armadale has languished and a lot of negative community components. And hopefully going forward, some funding, I saw it in the report. You know, hopefully there'll be some private funding, some public funding to help with the sustainability. But the one thing, I know you guys provided some really good statistics. I think the community engagement was great. I'll say as a part of the sustainability, because part of what I saw in the report was that we have industry in Armadale and the folks that have those jobs make over forty thousand dollars a year. Yet the people in Armadale, I think the average income was like thirty-four thousand dollars, which tells you you know, they don't, the, the people that have the good jobs don't live in Armadale. They work in Armadale. And then the reverse is true in terms of those that live in Armadale, don't have the good paying jobs. And so I saw the demographics, including the educational component that unfortunately fifty percent of the folks have don't have high school diplomas and for sustainability purposes, don't want to get off track with planning and zoning. But education is a big component. And I think that statistic was mentioned in one of the slides or one part of the report I saw, it was like at the top. And so if there's any connection that can be made for sustainability and the residents of Armadale enabling themselves to have good jobs because there's personal responsibility to, then that would be my strong suggestion. But overall, I think this is great.
Thank you. Thank you for those. Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. I'd just like to say that I really appreciated this report. One of the things I noted was the intergenerational participation that you were able to engage upon, which sometimes is very difficult. But I thought that was excellent. I do notice all the slides with the demographics and everything. I do have one quick question. Did, you mentioned that they didn't walk on, on the sidewalks and stuff because of the trucks and the noise? Were there any complaints about air quality, like emissions from the railroad and the trucks? Were there comments about that? And so kind of what were they? And was there ever a study on air quality in that area?
I'm, I'm glad you asked that. There's actually an appendix to the report prepared by a group called Clean Air Now. And that's led by a gentleman named Beto Lugo. And he was part of our steering committee. And he, so we met with him monthly. And his team prepared a really thorough analysis of Armadale and has, I can't remember the quantity of sensors that he was able to place around Armadale. I know there was at least a couple. But essentially, they provided a full report of their air study. And that we included in full in the report as a record of this process and, and their recommendations. And so you know, in general, I'll just say as far as a community feedback, the air wasn't a, a strong topic of complaint. I think there is a lot of pollution that comes from trains and trucks. And there's some, some smells from a couple places. But in general, the industries around Armadale area, as you know, are really logistics oriented. And it's not these big smoke stacks and heavy manufacturing as much as, as you said, it's vehicles, it's trucks. And it's a sheer volume of trucks that you see servicing all of these businesses and warehouses that are there in Armadale so that for easy access to I-70 downtown, I-35. So I encourage you to read this very thorough report that Clean Air Now put together. And it really, so some of those recommendations came into our industrial ring recommendations also related to truck routes. So to get to that question with for instance, Osage Avenue, which runs through the geographic, you know, center of the Armadale neighborhood. That doesn't need to be a truck route. You know, that's a convenient truck route. That eighteen-wheelers can drive east and west through Osage to connect to where they're trying to go. But you know, Kansas Avenue, Cheyenne, Seventh, you know, there are other ways you can drive a big heavy vehicle to get from A to B that don't need to go through the center. So part of us looking at that corridor as a way to really strengthen the neighborhood core and increase local businesses and pedestrian use and really like community corridor would be to say, let's not have all the trucks. You know, driving down the center of the neighborhood. So that was one example of one of the strategies. And so, yeah, the family I was, I was, you know, relaying that story. It was really also about speeding. I think it's, the roads are so wide. It's not just the loud trucks. It's just the, the kind of, you feel enabled to maybe drive forty-five when the speed limit's thirty, when your roadway sixty feet wide and there's no one, you know, there. And I think it, again, when you're, you're, and there's a large adolescent population in Armadale too. And I think that they really like the neighborhood feel of just walking the alleys, walking the neighborhood streets and staying off the big roads is kind of what I heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
One other thing real quick and part response to what Dr. Hill asked and then Andrew just mentioned. I noticed that a former planning commissioner, Dr. Daniel Sir Dr. Daniel Serta is a part of it. And I really think that that's a good thing. I discovered in that report that he's an Armored Dale native. And so again, kudos to the level of engagement as long, as well as the people that you have involved in it. So that's a good thing.
Great comment. Thank you. Very educated, very well-versed in this community. And invested. So other questions or comments? Yes.
It's gonna hand director plan or design. I just wanted to provide a small anecdote. I think to the power of a master planning process. You know, we've at the UG put a lot of a lot of emphasis on this planning process. It's one of the first ones we were able to do from start to finish under my directorship. And as such, we put a lot of energy into getting all the UD, UG departments engaged from the very beginning, from the RFP process all the way through to the sort of identification of the implementation plan or action plan. We have a bunch of projects that were sort of always kind of happening around, but not really with the community of Armored Dale. And I think that this planning process has put it square in the hands of, of sort of the community pushing forward different projects. And we have adjusted accordingly, sort of our thoughts and processes. But what I really hope is in the long term, both here in Armored Dale and elsewhere, is that we sort of start to change the culture within the UG where it's not the planning department's plan that then we sort of pass on to other departments to follow, that we all participate and engage in it. And I think we started to see a shift through this planning process in great part, in, in large part to both Kim and Mr. Madrell's efforts. I, as a, again, a small anecdote, in the year and a half that I've been at the UG and have participated in our land bank process, I haven't seen a single land bank project move forward across Armored Dale. And I believe that because we put so much emphasis in Armored Dale, and as we talked about infill strategies in Armored Dale, just last month, we saw 10, 10 different projects for 10 different land bank parcels in Armored Dale moving forward. So it's anecdotal, it could be circumstantial, but it really feels like that is a result of us both putting down a flag to say that the residential neighborhood is here to stay, but also all the attention we've been applying to the, to the area that people have, I think, resonated across the UG and the region.
Great, thank you and great work. I, I love the mood boards. I thought those were really cool to see all the things that, you know, could be, could be done. So those are great. Gunner, what do you need from us tonight? Anything? Kim?
We need a recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners, please, if that's what you choose. Okay?
And I'll say, we also do have some members of the community here to speak as well, I believe.
Great, I do. And actually Monica Mendez had her hand up a bit ago. Ms. Mendez, did you still want to speak?
I just wanted to add to what Andrew said about the community engagement piece, because I feel like this is the first time that I have seen a lot of effort on really getting residents involved, the stakeholders and as well the UG. It was a big collaboration and they did a great job on deciding to hire people from the community to do that, to help them with the outreach. And I will, with us tonight, also Claudine Sanders from, she's the Vice President of Armored Dale Renewal Association. So when you need our support, I will let her speak.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could you please have Ms. Mendez give her name and address?
I'm sorry, Ms. Mendez, could you please give us your full name and your address, please?
Sure. Monica Mendez, 2528 West 47th Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas 66103.
Thank you. And Ms. Sanders, did you want to speak? Go ahead. Just unmute yourself and give us your name and address.
Claudine Sanders, 8309 Isabel Street. And I am the Vice President of the Armored Dale Renewal Association. And Monica and I both wanted to attend tonight to speak in favor of the Armored Dale Master Plan.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience want to speak to the Armored Dale Master Plan? Okay, not seeing anyone else. What is the pleasure of the commission this evening? Commissioner Jones? You're muted. I'm sorry, Commissioner Jones?
I apologize. On behalf of the City and Commission, I wholeheartedly recommend the adoption of the Armored Dale Master Plan.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? I'm going to Commissioner Hill?
A second.
Thank you for that. And any discussion on Commissioner Jones's wholeheartedly recommended approval motion? Okay, saying none, we'll take a roll call vote on this one.
Hill?
Wholeheartedly, yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Miller?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the adoption of the Armored Dale area master plan passes, five in favor and none opposed.
Okay, can you change that to six to zero? Because I wholeheartedly agree as well. Count me in. I want my, I want my yes count.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Anything else we can do tonight for anyone? All right, Gunner? We good? All right. Well, no further business come before the commission. This meeting stands adjourned. Thanks, thanks to everyone for your work tonight. It's nice to go out on a good one.
All right, thank you.
All right, have a good.